Yeah, do you wanna, I guess, tell us?
Why don't we do some introductions first?
Yes, that's true.
So, why don't you start, Hebe?
I'm Hebe Quentin, I'm an alternate on the land board.
I'm Vicky Smith, planning board member.
And Tim Cook, planning board member.
And can you speak up on all the depth?
I'm...
Vicky Smith.
She's Vicky Smith. Tim Cook. Hebe Quentin. I'm Nathaniel Niles, I'm a planning board member.
My name's Rich Brown, I'm an alternate here.
And I'm Rich Mengy, and I'm a good idea member.
And I'm Dave Robbins, just a planning and zoning administrator.
I'm not just, just.
You're the only one.
I am, well, here. So Randy Marcot, Regional Arborists with EverSource Energy. And this is, do you want me to have you guys here?
I could.
Okay.
I'm Tracy Brant, and I work for ACRT, or a subcontractor with EverSource Energy that does tree inspections.
Oh, and I contacted you recently by email, because you wanna cut down a tree at my house.
So did I.
So, you're gonna mark the tree with blue and white tape.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I'm Vicky Smith. You too.
I guess today, we're here to discuss the trimming on the scenic roads here in line.
Yes, alright, so we're here for two things today. One, the trimming of the scenic roads in the town, and also, as part of our Hazard Tree program, anything that's outside the trim scope has to be considered a, what we call, we call it a unitry. But it's part of the Hazard Tree program, so.
A unitry?
Yeah, we call it a unitry, or a risk tree, but it's part of the Hazard Tree program.
U-N-I-T?
Unit.
Unitry?
Yep, that's what we call it.
Just, so like...
That's just our terminology.
That's fine.
Like a dead tree, or something.
Yep, so I call it the four Ds, dead, dying, diseased, or defective. Things that we find are gonna fall into the lines and disrupt the plan. Last cycle, I was actually the one who cleared Dorchester Road, I'm sure you guys have all noticed how open that is. Also, we hit the line really hard on East Stepford Road, because that's the feed that comes from Green Mountain Power that was constantly going up. So this year, we're kinda following up on that intense cutting I did, and just following up and getting the last few trees that we feel we need to get. So, when it comes to the scenic roads, we need permission from, not only the landowner, but we need permission from the town. So tonight, I'm here to get permission from the town in regards to trim, and then also the Hazard Trees that have been profiled, identified by Tracy.
And you try to do it for five-year cycle, is that it?
So typically, we used to be on a three-to-four-year cycle, but now we have so many miles that we're doing more of like a five-year cycle.
Yeah, Tracy just told me that.
Yep, so with that comes a little bit more of an intense trim spec, because what that trim spec gives us is time. So we don't have to, because we can't come back every single year, and just snip, 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 we need to get our clearance. Obviously, we can work around that with certain customers and stuff, but... So, I have this fancy... I just had this chair straight.
Perfect.
Good. Alright, so this is a brand-new system that we just started using. I started test-miling about two years ago, and we're fully, we're fully implementing it now. So you see here is the pink color, that's just part of the area work center, so just kinda show you guys a big picture of what I do. Whoa, not too much. There's a delay. Wait it will for a second. Alright, so I take care of this gray area, this pink area, and then this other area. So I cover about a third of the state right now. So I got a big area that I cover. So I work with a lot of contractors like Tracy that are certified, and help us identify the trees that we need to take out. So we're just, you know, and you guys are basically Mars for us. This whole area around there is all co-op. And then we got EverSource right here, this little circuit. So, enhance, enhance. Okay. Little bit of delay there, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to just look at this screen, because it's like messed up. Alright, so we have... We have River Road, which is right here. See, suffered, so your property is River... Guessing right around there? Yep, right there. So, and these, this is highlighted like a flamingo pink, as I call it. These are the scenic roads, so we have this scenic road. And that stretches all the way up there, goes all the way up to Orford. And then we got Brick Hill, right here, a little portion of the line that we have, and the red, that's our power lines. For reference. So actually, if I enhance, enhance, I'll actually see my pole numbers. And then I can actually see that I can actually put in the property owner. You know, so.
So it's really Breck Hill?
Breck Hill? Well, thank you for Breck.
You'll see the label, see, it starts out Breck Hill, then it goes to Brick Hill.
The road is Breck, and the hill, every mapping service is Breck, it drives me crazy.
Okay, well, no, thank you for Breck.
This confusion is going back hundreds of years, it's not...
Yeah, I was gonna say...
Oh, we're not the first?
No, we, no, we've seen it.
Okay.
And there's been confusion whether it's Breck or...
Yeah, no, I like to be right, okay.
No brick in the cemetery.
Alright, so then we got Washburn Hill. Not too much in the way of lines on that road, but there is a little bit. What else would be up here?
Acorn.
Acorn, yes, right here.
Do you have a spur that comes down Market to Washburn, or is that just a tiny little island that co-op?
This aren't even here.
Go to north, go up on that. Washburn. Okay, yeah, alright.
Yeah, so I'm guessing co-op probably comes in right here, merges in. Alright, so those are the roads, the scenic roads that are being trimmed this year, as part of our trim cycle. So we're here to ask permission from the town. The landowners have already been contacted, or are still in the process of being contacted. And then, so first, I'd like to get permission on that from the town, and see if there's any questions on the trim spec, or any landowners that have any questions on the trim spec. I didn't hand out the card, but, yep.
So I wondered if you run into like a kind of legacy-type tree, do you do anything to try to keep it?
So, so like a tree in your front yard?
Well, no, like a tree that's actually in your way.
Yep.
Because some of those trees, I know like Jennifer's House is a, you know, really amazing historic, beautiful architectural, you know, and it looks much better with big old trees around it than it does with new trees or no trees. So do you do, is that part of like what you do or think about when you decide which trees?
We do, it's at customers' discretion, so if we send that card out, and they just sign it, and say full spec, we're gonna trim to full spec, so regardless of what it is for a tree, we're gonna shape that tree to last, which in some cases will not be what the customer might not, you know, it might not look good to the customer, but to us, that's our trim spec that the PUC requires us to get. There's obviously options for the customers, when they get that card, they can ask for a consultation. We'll meet with you guys, and come up with a plan. And we can go around that, so it's not, doesn't have to be the full spec in every single span, but we do need to try to make it last. We have lots of customers that want that screening on their road. Our spec is to flat cut. And part of the reason for that is, one, it's for our booms to get underneath the lines, so that, because we actually have to go underneath, and then bring the boom up to get our side clearance. It's also when the power needs to be restored, the line guys don't have to sit there and go for all those sapling trees. But, we can also cut a two, a three, a gap, so we can still get in there, and the customer can still have their screening. So there's, you know, there's, there's, you know, it's very variable, it depends on what the customer wants, but...
Well, you know, I think you're in a tough place, obviously everybody wants electricity, and you need to provide that service, but then I don't understand, you know, why we have the scenic road thing, and that those types of things aren't taken into account, you know, just as a matter of routine, but it's nice that if the landowner reaches out, that, that things can be modified. And then, like on my road, I live on Market Street, not a scenic road, but there's two poles. When does the other pole go away?
Oh, so you have an old pole, and then new poles, but...
Yeah.
They can linger there for quite some time. Unfortunately, I don't have anything to do with that part of it.
Well, who does?
That would be the engineers, the area work center.
I see.
You have a chainsaw?
So, yeah, it's usually a company like JCR or something, a contractor that will drill the hole for the next pole, put the, put the pole in, and then somebody's supposed to come and take those old poles out.
And so who do you conduct for that?
Um...
Chris G. Mara, is that a good name?
You said a very good name, yes, yep, yep, so that's Newport Area Works Center, he's the main...
The Newport Area Works Center, okay.
Yeah, you can talk to Chris.
Yeah, because I, that's really annoying.
Yep.
And then, for, like, discontinued cabling, you see this same guy?
Cable, no, so a lot of times we share the poles with cable, so you have to tell, we have to call telephone.
No, I meant, meant like wires.
Depends on which wires.
Okay.
So, we're typically the top wire, which is the primary, and then we usually have a, well, we should, have a neutral underneath. So we're usually just the top two wires. Everything underneath is all telephone, internet, you know, fidium, whatever you guys have over here.
Yep, okay.
Then we, then we share poles, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we can't touch their lines, they have to, they have to deal with it.
Right, got it, three phases at the top, right?
Yep, so it depends on where you are, so on East Stepford, that's what we call open three-phase primary. And then if you go down Union Street, you'll notice there's Hendrix, which is our spacer cable. It's the same thing, it's still three-phase, but it's been scrunched up, it's highly coated, and it can deal with a pretty good-sized tree falling on it, without causing an outage. We still have to take the tree off, but it's less likely to have an outage.
Could you explain the triangles a little bit more?
Yep, yep, so I was gonna get to that, so the triangles, those are risk trees as part of our Hazard Tree program. So each triangle represents a tree.
And the colors?
Yep, so the colors, that's how our workflow works, where when it's red, it means it's been identified. And it's yellow, it means permission attempted with the landowner.
What, there's yellow, what?
Uh, yellow means permission attempted, and then green means that the tree is ready to cut, we have permission.
So the pink, the scenic roads that have no triangles, there's probably no lines there?
Uh, yes, where there's no red, there's no lines.
No triangles.
Yeah, and there's no triangles, and there's no Hazard Trees there.
So do you do anything along those roads, or you just bypass?
Yeah, we still have to trim, yeah, every single one of these segments, we have to trim.
When are you planning to trim?
So we have to wait for mud season to come to an end. We just got that lovely storm, we're almost done with it, and then now it's back. So, depends on what the road agent is gonna do, but I'm guessing with the way it's looking this year, it's probably gonna be towards the end of April, before we can even come in here.
So will you go, when you start, will you just go through all the, all the, do it all at one time, and start?
We do the entire circuit, yep.
That might, that might take a month or two months, too.
Um, this circuit's, I believe, thirty-seven miles long, so it's gonna take us probably about three to four months to trim it.
Send me all something.
Yes, and it could go into next year as well. Like I said, lime is kind of Mars for us, so it's very hard to get resources over here. But, depends how many tree crews I put on it, but, we'll be here pretty much most of the year.
And who's your sub, your tree sub?
Uh, this year will be Aspeln Tree.
Yeah.
Those are the orange trucks.
Those are the orange trucks, yep, Aspeln, that.
Yeah, they've been, they've been working on, we were really in Orford this last two or three days, about.
Yeah, and that's a separate circuit, that's, yeah, that's a different circuit.
It's in Orford, yeah.
Yep, and then, you know, we might have some cap jobs where we're putting like new poles in and stuff. That's separate from trimming, but we could be doing that as well.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How, how do you treat a road that is not scenic, different from scenic?
That's a good question. So, in general, we don't really treat a scenic road differently than a regular road, but we're required to have a scenic road here, because the, the road's been put under that certain... I don't know the word for it.
Protection.
Uh, protection, so, that, and it's, it's meant to ensure that we can't go in there and butcher the road. So somebody at some point made this a scenic road, so we have these scenic roads here, so. But we do all the same things on all the other roads. If a customer wants a consultation, they don't want us to get full spec, we work with them as well. So, really, they're not treated any differently. Your scenic roads were required to have a scenic.
So if you do, if somebody asks for a consultation?
Yep.
That happens, somebody just comes and talks to them before you guys come to cut? Or you do it at the time you are cutting?
Before we cut.
So they just have, somebody has to actually request that, and then somebody...
So I ask for a request, yep.
Before you cut, yeah, okay.
Correct, yep, we need permission. Lime is actually, believe it or not, mostly easement. We actually have really good easement records, so most of it I could actually just trim. And that's at the arborist's discretion, and I don't like to do that, so I'd rather get permission from the landowners. But, for safety concerns, if a safety concern does come up, I will pull easement.
So what if somebody hasn't requested consult, but you got, they come to cut, and then they come out, you know, at the time they're gonna cut it, they start cutting, and they say, wait a minute?
Yep, so perfect, yep, so what you're, what you're kinda leading into is what we call the forty-five day. So since the ice storms in oh-eight and oh-nine, the PUC put into law that most of those outages were caused by trees that should have been trimmed. So, they put into law a stature that allows us to, we send those cards out, these cards that I supplied you with, and we do not hear from a customer within forty-five days of that extent. We have the right to go in there and trim full spec. Now, the customer comes out, what are you doing on my property, why, blah, 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 right? It happens all the time, because people don't take the nail seriously, and they just hang it out. You know, we, we stop it, we're not just gonna keep going.
And they can discuss at that point.
We'll stop, we'll discuss, come up with a plan, and go from there.
That would be Aspeln, it would probably be the guys from Aspeln.
It would be the Aspeln guys, and then I get a call, hey, Billy Smith came out on River Road and, you know, coughed the shotgun and said, get off my property, and I'm like, okay, I'll, 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 I'll deal with it, and it, I believe it happens more often than that. And then I go out there and I mediate the situation.
And that's just on scenic roads, or is that on all?
That's all roads.
Okay.
Yep, so what I'm trying to get here tonight is the town's approval to do the trimming, answer any concerns you guys have. I have had scenic roads in certain towns where they've asked me, you know, it's really beautiful along our stone walls, we like the way it looks, we do not want any ground cutting to happen, and I've had to just top cut all the underbrush. So, you do have the option of requesting something like that.
Can't see the stone walls if you don't ground cut.
Yeah, it, it, it depends on the town, everybody's different. I think it opens them up and exposes your stone walls, but... So, that's what we're here for tonight, and then, you know, answer any questions, and then as far as the risk trees, those are trees that are outside the trim spec, that we find are gonna fall into the lines, causes, you know, disruption of the power, and we'd like to proactively take that tree out.
And that's every one of those triangles?
And that's the triangles, yep.
So there's a lot, yeah.
That's a lot of triangles.
Yeah, we got about two-hundred-and-fifty trees that we wanna take out on the circuit this year.
Just on the...
Over the entire circuit, not on scenic roads.
On the whole of line, yeah.
Yep, the scenic roads are actually, there's really not that much.
Because there's not power lines.
No, there's power lines, it's just New Hampshire electric, a lot.
Mostly on River Road.
Yeah, most of them are River Road.
There's one on Washburn Hill, and the, the one on Acorn Hill is behind a stone wall.
So the one on Washburn Hill is right up against the road, or is there some really big trees on that road?
The scar is a smaller tree.
That's one right here?
Ash tree.
Okay.
Just the ten inch.
Yep.
So? We have a picture though?
I have another vaguely related question.
So you can't...
It's okay, the ten-inch ash is gonna go down anyway, so it's...
Are you cutting all ash now, or are you over?
Maybe, it's probably like the last from before.
I think it's behind your zoom thing up in the rain.
So are you cutting all ash?
Here we go.
In anticipation, you're...
You gotta turn off your mic, I guess.
Yeah, I turned it off.
Yeah.
Try, we actually took pictures of the roads.
It's okay, I mean, that one ash.
So, to answer your question about ash, um, ash, we are proactively taking them out, even if they're healthy. They decline extremely fast, and become very dangerous to cut, so we're actually proactively, even if they're healthy at this point.
So you're basically taking out all the ash that...
We are, if we find it's gonna fall into the lines.
Right, it's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we reach the stage that the, the mature trees that you see now are all gonna be gone. It'll be just like what happened with the chestnut and the elm. But the good news is they actually have, you never think Russia was gonna help us right now, right? But they are, there's Russian wasps that actually have populations in New Hampshire right now. But the state of New Hampshire brought in, that actually eat the EAV, and bring it down to a population that does not kill the tree. So, once that population builds up in New Hampshire, and, you know, all the Northeast, it's projected that we will, we will have ash trees again.
Yeah, maybe you should save some of the healthy ones.
So, so actually, I actually have some on my property that the state has saved. There is a systemic that you can put in the tree, so it's expensive, and it makes the tree toxic to the insect. And the state of New Hampshire has hidden, they will not tell you where they are, stands that they have protected, and put systemic in, so that we have a seed source. So, yep, so there's, you know, unlike the chestnut, which obviously I'm sure you're all familiar with the chestnut sort, yeah, pretty good plan has been put in place. I actually helped, I worked for the Division of Forests and Lands, and actually helped cut down the mother tree, as we called it, that was in Concord, which is the first tree that we found with it infested. So, actually worked very closely with that, seeing how bad it's gotten in the last, believe it or not, western New Hampshire actually got hit last. For whatever reason, you think with the river and all the log trucks that would have got brought over here, but just started really hitting us in the last three, four years. The last year being the worst.
Yeah, driving through New York State, it's just terrible, 'cause you look, it's all dead ash along the highway.
Yeah, you'll see all the, what we call blonding, and that's when the woodpeckers scraping the bark off, trying to get to the, trying to get to the insect.
So how long do they think that it'll take for the wasps to really start helping?
Um, well, the good news, so I actually know Kyle Lombard, who was the head of the Forest Health of the state. I don't think they have a number on it yet, but I do know that they were talking about the fact that we actually have sustain, usually they have to keep bringing the insect in, and they already have sustainable populations that they're actually taking from, and spreading it in New Hampshire, because it's, they're doing so well.
Yeah.
So...
Are they obligate for her, or is it, do they eat other things as well?
Uh, EAV? They do, oh, the wasps. I'm assuming they must eat more than just the, I think they're, they're, they're favorites.
That's always a danger, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sure the state looked into that.
Bring in some rabbits, and yeah, that goes.
So maybe if you, if you didn't cut some of the really healthy ash now, they might survive, then maybe.
No, I, I can definitely say the timeline's not gonna work in favor of that.
We've got plenty of ash in the woods and on other properties that aren't in the right of way, so I think...
But if you do wanna save your tree, you can put a systemic in it, you can...
It costs like two, well, a hundred-and-fifty, and lasts for two years, so tree's worth it.
Could you please look at, on Shoestrap Road, I was just curious where the, where the line goes? She's, Washburn Hill, and just south, come down, keep going south. There's Shoestrap right over, just in that corner right there. Does the line go all the way through?
Where Shoestrap, it's off to the left, to the west.
See? So it ends?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll, you'll notice, we have these really weird segments, like right here, right there, but they might be co-op.
No, it's, it's just houses.
Okay, just, yep.
Long driveways with houses.
Oh, okay, but I have seen that out this way, where there's like these, like weird, like three spans of just random co-op. So we actually, uh...
Three more goes at two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, so through, through Dorchester Road, we actually feed co-op, and that actually feeds, uh, like twenty-six thousand people. So when that line pops, that's why I went so intense with Dorchester Road, because that hillside was like hamburger hill, I don't know if you guys seen that movie, it just, they just kept, they just kept falling in, so we had to do what's called total tree height, just take out every tree that was tall enough. Because for quite a few years, probably three, four years, I had been up there, you know, take this one, take that one, take, you know, and they just kept coming, so that's why we had to do that plan.
Randy, I had a, a question.
Yes.
Unrelated to this specifically, but what do you do if you see trees hanging up in the line? Either power or communication cables, what's the right thing to do?
Um, so, I mean, technically, you can call 911, and then they'll figure out who to call.
Okay.
But you can also, if you do know who the utility is, you can call the customer service.
Oh, interesting, okay.
And call the emergency line, and then there'll be like a prompt for, oh, are you recording an outage or a tree on the lines, and then go through there.
Okay, good.
Fortunately, it is a little automated, so it does take a few minutes to get through, so if you're looking for like a really immediate response.
You know, you're driving down, and there's a tree hung up in the, and, you know, someday it's gonna cause a problem.
Yep.
Right, okay, good, so call the service.
Yeah, and you can, you can put a, what's it called, a customer request in, where you're requesting a consultation, if you're the landowner.
Okay.
You can put a customer request in, that comes to me, then I send it to her, she goes and looks at it. If I need to get involved, I get involved, and then, yep.
Can you zoom, oh, can you zoom in on the River Road?
Which portion, the north portion or the south?
The north portion, because that was a scenic road, and there's
Yep.
a good number of trees that are coming down there, which...
Yep, so right here, is mostly on that really steep embankment, so they're not actually within the scenic road bounds. They're well outside of it, but it just happens to actually be on River Road, and it's on that steep embankment.
So the line's not, not next to the road?
Yeah, you can actually see, if I enhance enough here, you can actually see it's, you know, it's off the road quite a bit, and I was just driving up there, and, you know, we're talking forty-plus feet off of the right side of the road, off the hill.
So in that area, are you, are you cutting everything from edge of the road to the power lines?
So, there's two different cuttings, so one would be cutting for trimming. Yes, we'll be cutting everything as long as it's a full spec.
But you'll only be doing that along the lines, you won't...
Along the lines, yeah, yeah.
You won't be doing it in the, if it's outside the road, right of way, you know, you're doing it here on the line, the road is over here, you're not touching the trees on the road.
Nope, so our, so our, our trim zone is eight feet to the sides of the field phase.
Right.
So if you got a three-phase line, eight feet to the side of that line, eight feet to the side of the other line, fifteen feet above, and then all the way to the ground, is what our, is the area that we're maintaining. Doesn't mean we're liquidation cutting that entire zone, that just means that's what we maintain.
Right, and then other trees that are tall enough to hit the...
Yeah, and then you get a tree outside that eight feet.
That's tall enough to hit the log.
And that, it's not in our trim spec, that's where we need to mark it with a ribbon, and permission with the landowner separately.
But all of the trees that are falling to your four, dead, dying, diseased?
Yes, right, unless it's some ash, and then it's, it's healthy, but we're taking out proactively.
I have a question.
Yep.
It's property owner here, she doesn't want to have the brush trimmed all the way to the ground.
Yep.
So what can she do to make sure that that doesn't happen? Assuming that you got your thing, and then you got a notification in the mail, would you send it back?
I don't know, I was, I was...
Well, either way, all, all of them.
Anyway, things have came today, and we had a great walk up and down.
Yep.
And, yeah, I, I don't want all the brush cut.
Yeah, no, I remember, I remember your property last trim cycle, you worked with Frank Correll of Aspeln Tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I remember, I have this weird memory, I remember all the customers. Yeah, so I understand you don't want full spec done, so...
And, and there's some very big trees that are, actually, they are, they look like they're rotten or, yeah, yes.
Yep.
But I asked Tracy if they could just take the top off and leave them, they're such good bird habitat.
So I do do wild habitat, uh, wild habitat trees, as we call them, or wildlife statue. So what we do is we take the top of the tree down.
Yeah.
And we leave a statue that... And we leave a statue that is below neutral, so that if that statue falls, it's not sharing lines. We do also girdle the tree at the bottom if it's a deciduous, just to make sure it's not gonna sprout on the top. That way, it, it actually truly is indeed, you know, dead. And that's just what we do. We just go along with the chainsaw and we just, we cut it and then what it'll typically do is it'll. It'll sprout underneath the saw cut, instead of.
Well, I don't think it should do that to my tree.
Okay, well.
It'll die anyway.
Yep, so what we can do is, uh. I can do a walk-along with you. And talk about each and every single tree and what we can do for options. And then, um, on properties like yours, what I will do is, what I'd offer is, I will actually be on scene.
Yeah.
When the tree crews are there.
Great.
Cause sometimes they don't listen to me and I, it happens, so. And your, your property has history, I just drove past it today, it's beautiful, don't wanna ruin it. But I also need to make it safe, the utility and keep people's power.
I understand.
Yep. Um, yeah, so what I'll do is I'll set up a consultation with you.
Well, Tracy already consulted with me very nicely today, so that was great.
Nice. Yeah, so we can, you know, she can be there too if you feel comfortable with that. We can meet at some point and talk it over.
We need to talk about it again before you cut?
Yes, I, I won't do any cutting until we actually have permission.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
No cutting will happen until we got finished.
Thank you.
The system works.
I tried to make it work.
Yeah, thank you.
If your electric cooperative has the same. Has the same trimming.
I gotta be careful, because I could get myself in trouble. I, I, uh, I actually know the arborists very well, I went to the same school with them, we've known each other forever. They have a totally different trim spec plan, everything, the, a co-op is mostly easement. And they're, not to speak for them in any way, but just to help you understand, they have a different trim spec. Theirs is like fifteen feet to the sides. They cut the trees, everything, and they don't. They typically don't come back until about ten years. Eight to ten years.
But they also have the responsibility for seeing. Are they on the same cycle as you or would it be your answer?
I wouldn't know, I don't think they would be. Okay.
I'm trying to think in the fifteen years I've been here, if they've ever even come in too.
Yeah, they have a very long cycle.
I don't recall any of the. I've only done, not such a forever source.
Nicole is, is cooperative, the pinnacle on that. Acorn Hill, it stopped. Does that, is that where New Hampshire Electric Co-op takes off?
You see that pink stretch that goes up right there?
Yeah.
I'm on the right, just a little bit below that to the right. There's a feed that goes up the hill right there towards Acorn, catches it right on that corner.
Yeah.
That runs the entirety of the rest of the town.
So that's all of that and?
All the way to Breck Hill.
Yeah, and then right here is where co-op is too, you actually see all the big, uh, transformers and everything.
Yeah, yeah, so do you feed those transformers and then go back into Canyon and, or, and field out? That left line goes up, uh, along, uh, Baker Hill Road. Uh, catches, it goes overland and then up to Baker Hill, along Baker Hill to, uh.
Highco?
No, it's the Goose Pond and then into Hanover.
We stop right at Goose Pond.
Right, but I say, that line from, uh, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, I'm trying to figure out, if they feed from that way, if you feed.
No, they feed from a different area, you actually see there's a completely dead area right in between, one span, that's just totally dead, with no primary, so. They must be feeding it from somewhere else, I don't, I don't know their circumstances.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm curious, you know, the board have been doing a lot of discussions about solar and. One of the things, solar companies like it being within a thousand feet of a three-phase line, and so I was curious, just who feeds what.
Yep, well, you're not far from here. Yeah, that's for sure. Okay, so, um, so typically we take, unless there's more questions.
So we just. Need a motion from a board member?
We wind up being Mars, where's the connection? Where do we connect?
So let me zoom out here.
From the substation in Denver.
So you see these areas right here? This is all Eversource, all this.
Yeah.
Those are different area work centers, they're color-coded.
Yeah.
And then you have this whole dead area for us right here that's all co-op.
Yeah.
And then there's us, so that's why I call it Mars, even though we're right here.
So, so yeah, I mean, that's like five miles.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's just, you're, the area work center that takes care of you.
Yeah. Airport.
Is all the way down here.
Yeah.
Right about there.
So are we, are we fed from the east, we're fed from East Stafford?
Right from, uh.
Yep, so you're, you're fed from, uh, our feed comes from Green Mountain.
Okay.
The bridge that's out right now in East Stafford, that's where the feed is.
Yeah.
So most of your power loss. Has been from the, from the supply.
Yeah.
Cause their lines are not very well taken care of. Uh, it used to be my lines, and I took care of that very well last cycle, and I've been pretty impressed with it, it really hasn't. Haven't had much. So the program does work. Uh, but unfortunately we do get fed from Green Mountain there, so, um. Every time I see seventeen W one pops. Oh, loss of feed, and I know right where it came from, Green Mountain, unfortunately, so. And usually I come in from ninety-one and I can see all the lines and all the stuff touching the wires and everything. But now that bridge is closed, now I gotta come up one-twenty and, takes a little bit longer here, it used to be a really quick trip for me. But now it takes quite a while. So, this is our, we call this Esri, uh, or field maps. Very useful, so, uh, tentatively, um, we plan on taking, I think it's around two-hundred-and-fifty trees off the entire circuit. Um, the actual scenic roads, we're only talking. Barely even a handful that are actually within the scenic road or anywhere. Um, and just like the trimming, those have to be permissioned by the town and the landowner. If we get a denial from either or, we can't cut the tree. Now, the only difference with the trimming. Is because that forty-five day stature. If you guys are giving us the approval. How do I move with this? As long as we get approved from you. And then we don't get contact from that customer, we'll be able to do the forty-five day. So we will, some people may call you up, the guys up and go, hey, what, why are they trimming, I didn't give the okay for this, and it's probably because they threw the mailer out.
They won't call us, they'll call him.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
Yep.
There's a number.
So, uh.
Me too, I'll get the whole tree that goes down.
Yeah.
Yep, and then, you know, the, uh, to answer your question too. Um, there, there is a little bit of a difference with scenic roads versus regular roads. Scenic roads, we can't cut anything over six inches in diameter. Um, and then it becomes a, then it becomes part of the hazard tree program, whereas regular roads. Anything over sixteen inches in diameter becomes.
That will save more of your brush.
Yes. So, uh, but I will plan to have a consultation with you. You have her number, I remember the office serving.
Did my boys mail? Got my mailing?
Yeah, I do have these mail, and yeah, I've got it right here.
We can check.
Just out of curiosity, have you contacted everybody in town, I know I haven't been contacted.
So, Asplun is going through the process of mailing out everybody, or stopping at your door and sending you one of these notifications right there?
I did.
I did, yeah.
So I've got three properties and, uh, returned all three cards and I haven't heard anything.
Oh, you already got the card and you returned it?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't hear anything, now you returned it, is it like a consult request or? Okay, you just haven't heard anything? I can certainly take down your information, or have Tracy take down your information, um, at the end of the meeting or something, and then we can follow up.
I contacted Tracy, I just emailed her, used the email they sent, and she was like back to me the next day.
Yeah, I filled out the form and PDFed it, sent it out.
And then, just so you guys understand too, the, the contractor, we're not just going off the contractor's word.
Yeah.
They have to. Stamp that with a date.
Yep.
Um, to be legal. And I get, uh, provided the P S R, which shows every single customer when they were contacted and everything, so I am double checking to make sure before we pull a forty-five day.
I really appreciate that. So with that said, I really appreciate the outreach and the understanding you give to the landowners, um, I'll make a motion. That their request to trim and cut trees, um, along our scenic roads be approved.
Um, I just have, so if we, if we give permission, then are we giving permission for all the hazard trees also?
We can do it separate or we can do it together. But I do need permission.
I mean, it's kind of hard for us to know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
The landowner has to, um, that's like, I, I got a request for a tree to come down, it's not even marked, and so I said, well, I can't give you permission to cut down a tree I don't even know about. So I've, I've done that, and, but we're not gonna, are we, are you proposing that we should go around and look at each one of those hazards?
That's what I mean.
Well, you know, it's like we can't do that for everybody. So, I mean, Jennifer found her way here.
Right. So it's really up to the landowner.
It is.
And it has to be permissionable.
Yeah.
So, just by you giving me permission doesn't mean.
Right.
I'm gonna go cut everything.
I mean, I really see the planning board is the, the opportunity for there to be a public hearing. We don't control what landowners say about their trees with the power company, we just.
We're just good overall.
And, and just so you understand too, say that same property owner wanted to take that tree down. They would not need to have a public hearing, they could just do it, it is literally just for the town. So even if you guys wanted to do something on that road.
Yep.
You would have to hold your own scenic road here.
Yep.
Uh, so it's literally just for the utility.
Yep, and the town.
And the town.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, and so just for clarity, it's a permission to do both trimming and the hazard trees?
And their tree cutting as, as they requested on the, on the scenic roads.
Okay, all those in favor?
Oh, I can't vote, but.
Sorry.
Thanks for your.
No, thank you very much, I will be in contact with them.
I, on the other hand, said.
I don't want, I don't want you losing, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, there's, everybody's, situation is different.
I was the same way, they came in, I said just. Take everything and. Anything that's large enough for firewood lean.
Yeah. I have all these old dead trees and so when I had, um, cause I rerouted the power line and my neighbor called. You didn't have them take down the old dead trees, and I'm like, no Cynthia, I didn't. Um, you know, because they're good for wildlife and they didn't feel like they needed to come down, so I got, I caught hell for not having you guys. Do work that my neighbor wanted on my property.
Peckers, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so the other thing I wanted to bring to the attention of the board. I have one property owner that has been an issue for us for quite a few trim cycles. And it's gotten to the point where it's a safety concern. And unfortunately I do not have easement and it ends right before her property, so. Right here.
Can we guess who it is?
Right by the school. On, uh, East Stafford. There's a white house right here, right across from the town.
That's his old house.
Yep. That makes sense.
So, um.
Lynn, what is her, she's on wildlife, St. Francis, yeah.
So right here we have about three and a half spans of thirty-four, five. Um, I just checked on it again today and we have stuff actually presently touching the lines. Um, once we have a growing season this year. It is gonna become very dangerous, in fact, right now it's actually pretty dangerous. Um, we have a thing called M A D, which is minimum approach, uh, minimum approach distance. So most of that I actually can't even have my tree crews cut now because it's so close to thirty-four, five, they actually have to be two foot, six inch. Uh, from the thirty-four, five is the standard. Uh, otherwise they could get energized. When they're trying to cut the vegetation, so. This has reached a point where, um, I'm gonna have to have the line department involved when, or when we are able to trim this. Might end up having to be a controlled outage for a brief period of time, which is not gonna make my bosses happy. Or, or anybody else. I contacted.
Feeding, that's your major feed line.
So, that is the feed for the circuit, so, um, when that goes out.
That's everything.
That's everything, so the only part of the circuit that would actually still be live would be River Road, because there's another fuse right there. And all the other customers would be out. So it's the entire circuit, so it'd be just like when you guys lose, uh, the feed from Green Mountain. You'd have like seventeen customers on, the rest are. But, so, um. This customer had a bad experience with one of our contractors, probably ten years ago. Um, and will not allow us to cut, I've. Tried to go to the door, she will see you, acknowledge you, and not open the door. So, I wanted to bring it to the attention of town, I brought it to the attention of the fire department, I'm actually an Alsa fire myself. And, you know, I was looking at it from a fire perspective today, she's got propane tanks right there, the, uh. Limbys Seaside is very close, very close to all that vegetation that would catch on fire. And then you got a school, um, very close by to there, um, so I find it to be a huge safety concern. And, you know, just because you're not, just because you're not seeing sparking and harking does not mean it's not dangerous, if, if a. A kid or anybody were to touch the tree that is touching that three-phase. You, you just completed the circuit and you're gonna get energized. So.
I'm wondering if. Using some social capital of people that she knows to. From town authority, just personally speaking with her. Might work better than. Trying to, you know, up the force.
I don't know if they return.
Yeah, they don't get returns.
She walks by my house every night, pretty much, they walk in, in the morning, they walk the dog on the common, so. They're out and about.
Yeah.
Just like, oh, somebody else has to walk their dog, the other way, they got a little dog in the morning and then in the evening they walk down Market Street to the bridge.
So, so as a utility, we're more than willing to work with, with them.
I don't know.
We don't need to ground cut, she can keep her screen, uh, but we can't have stuff touching the lines, and we can't have it, or we. Need to come back every year or two to, to keep that.
So ultimately you can do it, even without her permission.
I cannot. Nope, I. So, I can during a storm event.
It was just an opportunity.
Wasn't close enough.
Yeah, um. Well, like I said, it, it's, it's beyond M A D now, it's beyond that minimum approach distance, so. The line would have to be de-energized, so it would have to be a complete outage. During a storm situation where I have an available crew, and then they could, um. Trim, trim contact, but that's only going to. Grow right back very quickly. It's not like we're gonna trim eight feet to the sides during a storm, we can, we can trim hard contact. Thankfully the lines are coated, it's not bare wire, because we'd already be having problems by now. But it is a very unsafe situation.
So she did respond to the forty-five day, within the forty-five days and said, no, you can't do any.
Um, actually typically what she does is she doesn't respond to anything, and then we show up to cut, and then that's when they're outside, they stop us.
So how many times has this happened?
This is, this will be going on three cycles now. We used to be on a three to four-year cycle, now we're on like a five, so. I've been with the company for.
And she won't negotiate?
She will, there's no negotiation, she won't allow anybody to do any cutting, and she had a bad experience, I believe it was with Asplun. Where they cut some of her arbor buddies. And she just won't allow us to cut.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot of hope, I mean, there was another tree that was near the school, but. A lot of people wanted to trim and she wouldn't allow that either. So, I don't have a lot of hope that she's gonna change her mind.
Yep, so that, that's why I'm coming to you, um, got the fire department involved and stuff too, because it's, it's a fire danger, uh, it's electrical danger. Um, and you got the school.
What's the role for the planning board?
The, the planning board has no authority to really, um. I, I don't think, I think of a select board, um, is a.
Public health?
Yeah, to at least try to. Get some conversations going. But I don't know, even know if the select board has the authority to say you're going to do this.
Well, it's a conversation, they can't force her, but it's just a public health problem. When the context of emergency management planning, I mean, that seems to be, like it's gonna inconvenience a whole lot of people if that goes.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-six thousand people.
Okay, so it's a whole lot of people are gonna be in an emergency situation because they're not willing to. Have their trees trimmed, so it seems like an emergency. Preparedness.[1741.88]
So if something happened and one of those trees did come down, then could you, at that point, could you go in and just, as, you know, to fix it, just cut?
Again, we have to be careful. I can, once it's on my equipment, I can absolutely remove the tree. Put the lines back up. She cannot stop me from doing that.
Right.
Um, but yeah, I can't just, oh, we're gonna do a little bit more trimming. Um, and unfortunately it's, it's three and a half span, so even if I were to do that for the next twenty years, my whole career. Uh, maybe I'd get it trimmed at that point, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's already gonna be grown back where I cut it before. Um, and like I said, we're willing to work with her. We're not trying to do the big bad utility. Um, trying to work with her. I can have a consultation, just like I, I'm gonna have with her. Uh, very easy to work with. I'm not a mean guy or anything. Uh, but when it comes to safety concerns, uh, I really do draw a line in the sand. You know, I see a school right there, her house is in danger, twenty-six thousand people out of power. Uh, you know, the, the fire season has been getting more intense as the weather is changing. I'm not gonna talk about climate change or anything, but. The, the weather is changing, um, our, it's getting more extreme.
Right.
Um, I was on more forest fires last year than I'd ever been, um, and they're getting bigger. They used to be.
So let's think about what the social structure is here.
Well, who's our emergency management?
Isn't it Michael Hensley?
It's Michael Hensley.
Okay, well, and he's, he's got, you know, he was trying to help the bear in Hannover. So she's gotta have a good idea that he's in favor of all the sort of things that she's in favor of. Maybe he could.
Yeah, I mean, it's an emerg, it's a public safety.
Wildlife is your concern.
Yeah.
I mean, this also, I would think potentially poses a issue for the wildlife.
Well, her whole house could go down.
Would, would. The other, the other thing I wanna offer too is we have a program called Thirty Foot and Under where we will actually plant. Uh, compatible vegetation underneath the lines. Um, so she's worried about her screen and I've never had the opportunity to even get this far in talking with her, cause she just doesn't. Doesn't regard us at all. She just, you know, ignores us. Um, there are some options.
Would any other arborist or tree trimming company handle this?
Besides Asplund, I guess.
Besides, besides, well, no, besides somebody who works routinely on the, on the lines.
Yes, so I, I'm also willing to bring a completely different contractor in than Asplund, because I understand her. Her bad experience was with Asplund.
Right, right.
Um, you know, one bad apple spoils the batch, right? Um, but I do have other contractors that I can bring up here. Um, I don't know if you guys remember the big willow tree across, um, under Dorchester Road. Uh, there's that hotel right there. Was it Annie's Hotel or whatever, right at the intersection of Union and, uh, Dorchester? It's like a little hotel and a little restaurant right there.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Ariana's Restaurant.
Yeah.
Ariana's Restaurant in the line there.
There, there was a large, um, willow right there and some other trees and that was northern tree that came in, cause they have a crane and all that type of stuff. Uh, so there's options, but we can't even get to the discussion part of even showing her any options because, and it, and it's just gotten to the point where it's a huge.
I mean, that might be the, at least the first thing to suggest. Uh, I don't, you know, she obviously had the faith.
Talk to him. It's kinda hard to.
Yeah, but I.
That's why I'm trying to think.
Someone.
Get people in authority who she knows.
Yeah.
Mike Hensley.
Yep.
Welcome, Michael. I think that's, um, Ben, yeah, I don't know if Ben has any sway with her. This is probably gonna be all come, we'll see if we can get going.
Yeah, the other thing I can do is I can involve the PUC, Public Utility Commission. This is who makes us do all this stuff.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
And I can reach, reach out to them, but you know, um, typically try not to because.
Use the social capital first.
I can get a little.
Exactly.
Little intense.
That really sets the walls.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't wanna have to do that to her, so, um, trying to. Proactively get it taken care of without having to go through that process.
Another question, you said if there was a controlled outage to de-energize that line, what's the duration of that? Is it thirty minutes?
I mean, it's, it's three and a half spans that haven't been trimmed in over ten years. It's not gonna take a few minutes.
So.
My guys have to do it safely and, and then, you know, then of course, you know, they're dealing with. Now it's in the, it's in the equipment and you gotta not damage the equipment and.
Mm-hmm.
She's not gonna, definitely not gonna let us flat cuts and now you gotta pull all the trees through other trees. It's, you know, it's be quite a few hours, so.
Okay.
Getting a controlled outage is really not an option.
Uh.
Cause it would be, it would be too long. There's no way to backfeed it. There's no J switch that we have or anything that we can.
But it would be hours.
Yes, it would be hours.
That, that's, that's the number I needed. It's, it's not fifteen minutes and just.
No, I wish it was. I wish this was only one limb we were talking about. I just had one limb to cut, but yeah, fortunately it's about three and a half spans.
Yeah. Yeah.
And everybody understands thirty-four, five, like you said that earlier, just like if you, like, I don't know.
There's three thousand four hundred, uh.
A little more.
Thirty-four thousand five hundred volts, yeah, right.
That is the highest voltage that we do on distribution.
Yeah. They have real pretty colors when it darkens out.
Hmm. Well, doesn't, I mean, their house is really at risk. I mean, if they like their house.
Yep, so, um.
That, that is kind of a safety thing for them, which maybe Hensley could communicate as well.
Get the select board and Hensley to start working that side of it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Unless.
Help us out.
Well, in the context of our emergency management planning, we discovered that this power line is, you know, could go out and your house is at risk and. Something needs to happen. I mean, frame it like that. Um.
Yeah, well, it's a good, yeah, that's the way to start, but I don't, not to sound too negative, but I think she may at some point have to. You have to bring in the good, big, big guns at some point, maybe, but hopefully.
Mm-hmm. And then like I was saying with the, uh. The change in weather and the, the dry seasons are staying drier longer. It's, it is quite a fire hazard as well and, uh, I don't know if you guys saw the news, two years ago, we had a very large fire, um, up in Cornish. And it, it spread super fast and it was, I think it got up to almost nine acres or something that burned. It actually got into the. Right under the transmission lines. Uh, when those start getting hot and start weakening, that's bad, so, um. I, I'm, I've kinda got to see it on both ends, cause I am on the fire department too, so I'm, I'm not just talking about this. I've actually seen it happen. Um, and it's, it's, you know, we all rely on power and it seems like this mystical thing that goes through those lines and it's not dangerous, but it's actually. It can be very dangerous as a sample, so.
Well, we'll do, we'll do as much as we can and whatever we can to talk to.
And, and that's all I was asking for. I just wanted to bring it to, you know, and then also.
We're asking, we're asking Aaron to talk to Hensley.
Is there any other spot? That's the only one that I knew last time we spoke.
The only other spot was actually her property, um, has gotten extremely close and that's actually bare wire out there. Um, that doesn't feed as many people. I think it's like twenty-three people feeds over there, but of course it's still a safety concern that I'd like to. So I will work with her. I think she's, she seems.
Very reasonable.
Yeah, she seems reasonable.
North of that, they're all greens. On the hell that means they're all dead.
They're all ready to go, ready to cut, yep.
Cool.
Um, yeah, so that was really the only trouble spot is that one spot right there at the junction.
Yeah.
I'll talk to the select board members as I, I get them to, just say, hey, there, there is an issue that. Needs dealing with and try to get it on.
Let me get it up for, it's next Thursday, right? Cause the meeting?
Yeah, yep, um, I'll talk to Dina tomorrow to.
I should be there anyway for other stuff, so. Do it. Y'all can help with that.
And the other thing I understand, sometimes, um, when you're working with a customer like that, you know, say I show up, he shows up. Couple, it becomes very, oh God, there's so many people, so sometimes it's better to just show up with one person. Um, but I'm more than willing to meet with them and go there and, you know.
Yeah.
Very peacefully explain the situation.
I think Mike tries, um, with his, our emergency managing director is, uh. Uh, can be a very calm, easygoing. Um, person and very easy to deal with, so, um, it might be that he can just approach her and say, hey, we've got a problem. Let's, we talk to, yeah, see what we can do and that may be enough to at least get the conversation going.
Yep, and that, that's why I'd like, at least the conversation to start going, um. Cause I don't think she understands.
And she may not.
What's at stake there.
Yeah.
Um, I'm too, looking at it from a firefighter's perspective, you know, suddenly looking at, okay, two eastern propane tanks right there.
With all the under.
These, underbrush.
And dead stuff that's in there. I mean, you can't, you can't see from the road into the, the property from there and stuff like.
Oh, it's gonna go right up the side of the house, super quick.
Yeah.
Probably built in the eighteen hundreds, probably doesn't even have fire blocking the walls or anything.
No.
You know, um, so, and it happens awfully fast and there's people cooking with their grill on the porch. I've seen that get bad real fast. Um, so, yeah, guys wanna bring it, break the tension of the town.
You need to get one of those blankets of heaven's hands.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, they actually work very well.
Do they? Cause I, I tell you, they're effective ads.
I, I have them in my house, ready to go. My wife's cooking.
She is?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Actually, they solve it, yeah, they solve all kinds of acts, different size.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, they work, they work really well. Yeah, unfortunately we have used them at my house. It wasn't me.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. If you guys have any other questions now that, ah, we can all breathe, the bad part's done, right?
Yep.
Um, any other questions at all?
Good.
Okay.
I just wanted to catch up with Tracy.
Yep, we can, we can do that and, um. Yeah, so, um, did you guys need any money for holding this? Some, some tiles require us to pay?
Um, I haven't gotten the bill yet, but I had to do, um, notification through the, the, um.
Uh.
Paper?
Definitely newspaper.
Yeah.
That's just letting you know whatever that was and we'll, we'll write you a check.
Yep.
Um, you got my email, so.
Yep, I have your card, so.
Yep.
Yep, you're.
Good.
I could not find your card for the past like month.
I lost some right there.
Yeah, like, I gotta get ramped up on this before the growing season.
Yeah, yep, and, and then, uh, you just hit the head on the app too, something else I wanna explain. Uh, last year, we had the most intense growing season that we've ever had, where stuff grew almost two or three years.
All the rain.
Uh, from all that rain, so with the weather changing, it's very, um.
But you don't know now what's gonna happen, yeah.
And we, and we can't tell, but what I do know is that we do need to at least get our spec, uh, or something that we think is gonna last.
Mm-hmm.
You know, four to five years and, uh, we can go from there. Yeah, that's all I have. Tracy, did you have any questions to the town? Okay. All right, perfect.
And if you need to, you know, contact the people and, you know, let me know when I can get you contact information if I have it or.
Yeah. All right, perfect. Well, thank you for having us.
Thanks.
My first, I've, I've actually been in line quite a bit, working here over the years, but I was never actually in the arborist role. So I kinda moved up the ladder and now it's, uh, it's fun to be here at this role, so.
Trying to get a person.
Dave Crane.
Dave Crane.
Yeah, that was my, yeah, that was my trainer. I worked with him for a long time.
I don't know, I.
And he was a, I think he was thirty-two years or something, I think. Actually just saw him a couple days. Yep. Yep, very nice.
Who do we have come in to talk about?
All right, so I consider that permission.
Well.
That's what I'm, well. Mike, get that email there just.
Yep, what I'll probably do is, uh, I'll have, I'll write up a notice of decision. Or document, have whoever is elected tonight, the chair sign it and then I.
Oh, yeah, you guys got the voting funds tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do a scanned copy of that to you and that.
Stick down your contact. Next time.
Then hopefully we'll see the crews sometime after mud season, um. All the talk of the road agents, so we'll see when that's.
Yeah, he's.
It's hard telling not knowing it, but we were almost done with it. It was almost done and then.
Hopefully then, once this melts, it'll, everything will.
How much, uh, so did you guys end up getting up here?
Hundred forty-three.
Yeah, I got about two and a half feet higher, yeah. And it's pretty much gone.
Yeah, down to about eight inches.
Yep, in the shade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not really frost.
Like stuff that came down.
Yeah, no, it was impressive.
Yeah, there's not much fro, or any frost in the ground at all, so it's gonna soak in. So I wonder.
Okay.
We usually get those on Easter.
Trying to put more information out there, you know, that list serve or whatever, when these guys are coming. Cause you know, so many people that don't even pay attention, they don't even know what's going on.
That's a good idea. Dave, Dave could do that.
Look.
Um, coordinate when you know that the folks are coming to town, just opposed to the list serve the way that they. Um, Jordan does when the accessory is going around.
Um, they're gonna be here for three months or more, so.
But just when they're about to start.
Yeah.
You know, when it's mud season's done and.
Yeah, if you can let me know before they start, there's a, a list serve in town and that I can email and it'll, I'll just put it out that. Okay. Your crews are gonna be in, working in the area and.
And correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, you guys do pretty much shut down every road, right? So I, just the ones that are posted or?
Um, well, pretty much all the roads get posted.
Yeah, okay, that's why, that's why.
And, and the thing is, um, you have to be careful, a lot of roads are state roads. So you have, you have Dorchester Road, East Stepford, North Stepford Road, um, those are all state roads. And so the state hosts those.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, they may lift because they're, they may lift it on the paved sections of those roads earlier than, uh, Scott looks at on the, the dirt. Roads in town.
That reminds me, I have a question actually about that, so the. I don't know, Randy, if you're still connected or.
I don't, no. What are you looking for?
I think it's by Five Brook Lane. It's off of the ten Dartmouth Highway. And I talked to the homeowner at Five Brook Lane and he was, he, it didn't belong to him, Tristan belonged to him. And he suggested that it might belong to the state, to vacant parts, like not.
Is it, is, uh. I just.
Uh, either that bridge, uh.
Yeah.
Over.
Um, or, uh, Grand Brook?
Yeah, I think that's a parcelway.
Yeah, pretty good, that's state.
Yeah.
Okay, I sent them something in the mail. Okay.
All right.
Um, you might talk to, it's the, uh, um, DOT District Two is the. People who manage that and if you look up just NHDOT, um, District Two with a Google search.
Yeah.
It'll come up with a webpage for them that has all the contact information.
Yes, I have. I was working with DOT on another project. I think it's Mark Ross was his name, so I can ask you.
Yeah.
So who does Route Ten? That's a dumb question. Who, you guys do Route Ten too?
The, the road or the lines?
The line, I mean, you trim.
The lines we do, we don't do the road.
But it's not scenic, so.
No, I meant, I meant you trim, you trim on Route Ten?
We do.
Yeah, we all. Some lines a lot.
Quite a portion.
Aren't they trimming at Hannover right now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then that switches over to go on.
Right about by the dip, anything north of the dip is go on.
What's the dip?
Going north on Route Ten, we go. Little.
Yeah, right where that River Road comes out.
Uh, so it's, uh, well, first off, North Stepford Road.
With, with no, north.
Corners, go down the dip by Colgan's, north of that is pretty much.
Okay.
Getting into New Hampshire, I should call it.
Yeah, Goose Pond.
And Goose.
So that's the, yeah, yeah, Goose Pond's the other end of us.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, okay.
All right, well, we're happy here in Mars.
So if you need anything, I don't want you to think that's bad, same ours, it's just you're, you're far away. Yeah, I don't want that to be perceived wrong. We'll just.
No.
We got our far away.
Nothing wrong with Mars.
In some ways Mars probably, that's probably.
Yeah.
So the minutes.
I shouldn't say that on live.
The minutes are, I, I wasn't here and I listed as present.
Oh.
And then I think that there is. Then I think that there's a negative missing out.
Like maybe November.
Yeah, list of allowed uses, commercial uses.
Storage units are not allowed.
Not allowed, right.
And somewhere.
Which made me think, you know, you know, what is Steve Small doing and Rob Meyer with their arena where they're renting out. Spaces for storage of. I mean.
It's not a, a business use. It's an accessory use to the property.
I see.
Well, I would say it would be a home occupation, not accessory use, cause that's not a traditional.
So I was wondering, I was just wondering whether we wanted to add something to the effect that under the present zoning. There would be allowed two more buildings on that, I mean, it would be more, is that correct, David? Or is he could put two more?
It, it's not, it's not the number of buildings, it's the coverage.
Well, there's, there's some things going on here and I tried to not. Put a lot of information in that it's an informal discussion, there was, I don't want. Somebody to come back and if plans changed and said the planning board said this, but, um, you know, it's.
I guess so, I just thought it would be, keep it negligible.
Right, well, in fact, though, I, I did, uh, send a, a, a proposed wording to, back to David. Um, and it, it got kinda long, so I wrote it out. Um, but may, maybe I can read it and we can see. Uh, the board discussed with Mr. and Mrs. Keith plans to develop their property, this is, this first paragraph is the same. Uh, property at thirty-four Pleasant Street, currently they have a single family home on the property, would like to add two or three more. Under plan development provision of the zoning ordinance. Uh, I then added a phrase, because a planned development requires some commercial use. Then it goes into what it says, the board discussed the possibility of creating storage units on the post. About planning board and zoning administrator noted that the storage units. Is listed as a permitted use in table.
Not listed.
Okay, not, okay, that's, that's.
Right.
Not. Um, and then it was noted that office conversion might be possible. Then I added two more, uh, sentences, the board also discussed the maximum gross floor area. Allowed in the Lyme Common District is six thousand square feet. And then the last is, in addition, the board discussed the fact that the lot coverage. In the Lyme Common District includes the footprints of buildings plus the area of any driveways. And that the maximum lot coverage allowed in any single lot in the Lyme Common District is twelve percent of the fossil.
That sounds like too much. You're reciting the zoning ordinance and you don't need to do that, you just go as per the zoning ordinance, you know, or, or something, you shouldn't.
And it's not floor area, it's lot coverage.
Well, there's gross floor area is six thousand square feet. And then lot coverage is the, uh, is this twelve percent which comes up to seventy-eight hundred square feet. Oh, no, it may, the six thousand square feet is a maximum.
Lot coverage. Yep, so, so let's, let's just say as per the zoning ordinance and not put numbers in.
David said it gets too complex.
No, I, I agree, but I was just. Maximum lot coverage is six thousand square feet.
In Lyme Common District, nothing should be over six thousand square feet, even if the numbers. So I would still request that it says because a planned development requires some commercial use. Then, then the rest of that paragraph makes some sense, because otherwise. It was a little. Uh, surprising.
Do you say? Requires some commercial use and must conform with other standards in the zoning ordinance or something like that, so that we don't lose your intent, but we don't. Misquote.
The, the other thing I questioned was the, the, the sentence, it was noted that an office conversion might be possible, I, I don't. I know we talked about that, but I, I still don't quite understand what that means. Because right from the get-go, you can't. You can't, uh, convert. From the, from, from the very beginning, can you? I mean, you have. Have an office for a number of years.
Although you have to have the building, but under conversion, um, there is nothing in there. Other than a five-year limitation on putting in extra housing units, you have to have plumbing and sewer and such in the building. Um, there is no time limit on when you can do a conversion.
What, so conversion from what to what?
Uh, you would be converting a open space to an office.
That's not a conversion.
Where you're converting.
Your convert, no, conversions are when you change the use of a structure.
Or part of it.
Okay, well.
I'm, I'm just not sure what this really does.
So I don't know what that was about, so.
I, I suggest we delete it, but.
Yeah, cause why was Rusty converting anyway?
Cause you're not allowed to have a new office. Uh, you can convert an existing space to an office in the Lyme Common District, you can't build a new office.
What? Even in a planned development?
No, it's part of like trying to enable people with big old houses to be able to put the space in those houses to some. Right, reasonable use without them then tearing down the house, it's just to give them some options with the space. So that's why that was there. Um, building new offices, I mean, at the time when the zoning was written, it would mean, oh, now we've got forty-five Lime Road. Or, you know, that kind of thing coming in to our common area. So the point was to try to keep our existing structures.
Is an office a commercial use?
I would say yes.
So if a planned development has to have commercial use, but you can't build an office, this is making my head explode.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, you couldn't, if you're doing planned development, you can't make part of it in an office, is it?
No, no offices are allowed in the Lyme Common District, it's only convergence.
Oh, that's right, Lyme Common District.
So if Rusty built a house and. Uh, it built another house.
Nope, you, you would have to convert an existing.
He built another residence. And then at some point converted that to an office. That would satisfy the commercial requirement for a planned development.
And I think that's what, that's what he went away with. The main problem that he had was the cap on the, um. On the area.
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage. And there was actually some mention that we were gonna check something. Um, you remember that? Whether the six thousand was a hard number or was trumped by the twelve percent or something.
No, the six thousand is a hard number, I can guarantee you that.
And that included driveways.
And the driveways. And that included driveways.
Can you go to the zoning board and get a variance?
You, you have to prove that you, that there's a hardship. And the hardship is basically you have to prove that you can't do something that all your neighbors can. And to say. You know, I can't do this, but yet, you know, he can, he can, he can, she can, she can, they can. Okay, that's a hardship, because the zoning is preventing you from doing it, to say, I can't do this because the zoning, but. Yeah, none of my neighbors can do it either, that's, um, pretty hard to.
Yeah, it's hard to get a variance, special exception was a lot easier.
I see.
Variance is not easy.
You just need, you have the hard, proving the hardship is.
Is a workshop a commercial use that you're allowed to build a new one of?
I don't think workshops is a use.
This, this could come under what we change in housing.
In the, in the Lyme Common District, yeah.
Right.
It could be however you, you know, you may wanna put elsewhere, I mean, it's up to the board to, you know, talk to the town, see what the town wants to.
Well, I think we, I, I, I think we need to go on, I mean. And get our housing ducks lined up, we don't really need to talk to anybody until we have something to say, how's this? Cause we've done surveys and we just need to not get off the can, but get with it.
Were there biz housing surveys?
No, but we did survey not too long ago and we. Yeah, well, how, how, how long ago was that?
Well, the.
Ten years? Yeah, that was, that was more.
That was three years ago.
Was that three years ago?
It was pre-COVID.
That's like longer than that.
Yeah, no, okay, I was, I was at least three years ago.
Twenty nineteen, yeah. Yeah, so we're twenty fourteen.
And what was that? Was that the housing inventory?
We did a housing inventory before, but that was not, no, we had a big discussion about. Uh, rezoning parts of town and where it's appropriate to have, um, commercial and. Uh, and other residential development.
Can I, can you have a conversation? Sorry, I didn't mean this.
So somebody made a motion to.
We voted, we voted and approved something.
Approved with, but with this amendment, so.
Yeah, I, I need, I didn't, there, there was a lot of talk of.
David needs to get the amendment, yeah.
Right, so what is? So I, I, I guess I would like to start the second paragraph, because a planned development requires some commercial use. The board discussed the possibility and then go into the, the second paragraph of the existing minutes. Um, then the board also discussed. Uh, concern, no, what, what did we, we discussed limits of both. Uh, gross floor area as well.
No, just say conformance with the standards in the zoning ordinance.
I think that's a good way to say it, yes.
Okay, so I get the first part, now what's the second? Where the, the board discussed.
Also discussed conformance with other requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Then are we taking out the sentence, it was noted that an office conversion may be possible?
Yeah.
I think so.
But it is interesting, I think, when we, when we think about problems in town, I mean, we've, with the solar amendment, we saw. Oh, Scott Bailey can't do that, huh? And, and now we're seeing that Rusty can't do what seems like a reasonable thing in that spot and it's like. Maybe those are good problems to focus.
Well, how about conversion of Brett's place to housing?
Which one's Brett?
Well, what used to be Green Mountain Studios, which used to be. I mean, that whole thing could be many units and, and that is a great place to put a lot of houses. And I can't, I mean, Brett makes it work, but I bet you. The best use could be a lot of houses there and.
Even in that building.
Or tear down that building and just use the land because of its location.
So can we, can we finish up the?
I think I have enough, I just need a, a motion and a vote.
I move them.
I'll second.
And I have to abstain from the vote, cause I wasn't here.
Okay, all those in favor?
You got that I wasn't there.
Yes, I do.
I'm just tending to my poor sister.
A template that I use and I have to go through and edit that template every time. I've actually finally changed my template to remove David Van Leeuwen and David.
Well, they're always here in spirit anyway.
Oh, David Ruben Junior.
Oh, oh, oh.
And Amber Borland.
It's been a few years.
I added Nat into the, the template, so. Far fewer people to.
He's made it. A regular.
The same? Was the recount?
No, the recount, that was very.
Did you, did you?
I, I, uh, Nat won by one more, he got one fifty-six.
I guess they found another vote.
I, I think we have alternate delegates, don't we?
Oh, so what happened?
So, uh.
I was out of town, so.
The initial vote count was a hundred fifty-five for Nat and one fifty-four for me. And I said, let's do a recount, and everybody was really gracious about it.
Well, yeah, I don't blame you, I would have done a recount.
I know, I know, and, and they were appropriately gracious, and so what happens is the select board. The town moderator and the town clerk come in and, um. Of course, Mark Schiffman is the brandy new town moderator and Emily Shepherd is the brandy new town clerk, so both. Bill Waste and Patty Jenks were here as well, and so apparently, Matt, I can't be in the room. So, but, but the report that I have is the select board sat over there. And, uh, Emily took a, a bundle of ballots out. Of like, they come in, they clump them in forty, groups of forty ballots and they hand it. And each, each select board goes and examines each ballot and I guess marks it down, I don't know. And then at the end of the forty, they put them all together and then they announce their counts, if the counts are the same, they go to the next batch and they go to the next batch and then. That's how, that's how it went.
Sounds like.
So just the select board count?
Could be human error.
I heard it was a select board plus another group that had to count, but.
It was the, the moderator and the town clerk.
They had to be present. Or just the ones that, the ones that actually do that.
So, so congratulation again.
So hold it, so what was the outcome?
So, the, the final count is Nat got one fifty-six and I got one fifty-three, so.
Oh, so one of them switched, as opposed to them finding a new one.
Yes, right. Oh, it would be terrible to find, oh, wait, wait, there was this ballot under the, you know, that would be great. And it couldn't, it couldn't have been a tie, right, because of the number of votes.
What if it was a tie, then what?
You flip a coin.
Yeah, seriously?
Are you kidding?
No, that's true.
That's democracy.
It couldn't have been because there were.
It happened to, it happened to a state legislator.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Yeah, um, and the, uh, I mean, but, you know, it, not everybody voted. Some people voted for neither.
And some people voted for both.
Apparently, some people did vote for both and it's like, yep, this is a spoiled ballot.
Wow, that, that's like.
High drama in line here, yes.
What was it, the stolen geese? That was the Valley News topic for a while here, the beavers and the stolen goose. I think Ray Burgendahl or somebody, somebody had geese that. That somebody, the neighbor kept stealing because the geese were obnoxious and chased them on the road and stuff. So that made Valley News.
And that was like thirty-five years ago.
That, I, you know, there's not much that makes it to the news from line.
The last time I looked at the Valley News, I read an article on the front page. And I picked up six grammatical errors within the first paragraph. Now, I am probably the worst person for knowing grammar. And I said, if I can pick out six. Then I'm not gonna spend my money on this paper ever again, because it's just.
You, you did see my picture on the cover of the.
But we did. You looked very good.
Yeah, it was great.
Always look at my best.
I just look at. That's all we get it for.
Oh, yeah, online, I'm like, I'm not dead, okay.
No, but it's true, I find, cause I find somebody that's died that I knew that I didn't know about until I read the Valley News, so it's nice to.
Well, so we gotta end. What? Oh, yeah, there you are, but who's lying down?
That's Hunter Snyder and dying.
He's, no, he's taking notes on his iPad. Very dramatic.
Well, it was the Shoestreck Road discussion.
Oh, I see.
And he lives right.
I see.
He lives twenty feet off Shoestreck Road, so.
So we should keep moving here, um, yeah, yeah, what's next, I like.
Who wants to be chairman? Anybody wanna be chairman?
I, I would nominate Rich.
Okay, I'll second that.
And I would nominate Vicki if she wants to do it.
Uh, you know, I have a problem in that I have had a career of night meetings and I've had to for. Um, since the eighties, however many forty years, uh, arrange my schedule around night meetings and I'm coming to a point in my life. Where, um, I like, I wanna travel and not have to do it around night meetings, so I feel like. Um, I would, I'm happy to help out as, as much as I can, but, um, there are times when I need to be gone. And my traveling will, I'm, I'm expecting a grandchild soon and I only have another like year of travel. And so I need to do that, so you can stick with it for a year. I'm happy to help, I know you haven't been doing Vermont or New Hampshire stuff for a long time, I'm happy to help. In whatever way I can, but I also don't think a chairperson should be absent and I anticipate the next year, I'm still gonna be traveling. So that is my reason why.
I would say that I would give you a lot of support.
I'm, I'm happy to do it.
That's excellent.
Yeah, well, you can share it with, yeah.
With you.
No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big deal and John did an amazing job and I know it's a lot of work and so. You know, if it gets overwhelming, I need to like delegate.
Right.
And one thing, I mean, we could do is when we get subdivisions or site plans to come in to deputize somebody. To do a really thorough review and report about it, I mean, everybody still needs to do it, but so you're not on the hot seat.
Cause John was really good at writing stuff and he just did a lot of writing stuff up and, yeah, that was.
Well, like you, I've got, uh, I'm, I've got, uh, three out-of-state weddings this summer. But hopefully I can. Yeah, but other than that, yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, and then also I, I think that I can contribute a lot by not being chair, but you know, helping with the master plan chapter. They just did Hanover's whole plan and so I'm kinda like, you know, this is, um, shouldn't be that terrible.
Sounds good.
Yes, we need to make a motion.
And I seconded it.
Um, all those in favor? You better.
Who's our select board gonna be?
Uh, still, uh, David Kahn.
He must be away.
Um, I don't know if he's away or not, I haven't seen him this week, but. I think unless there's urgent business, he tends to. Stay away just cause he has other meetings also at night. On a lot of other committees.
Yeah, so do we need a vice chair and a secretary?
Um, vice chair at least, we've never had a secretary, I've pretty much taken that role.
That's good. You can, do you mind keeping?
No, that's, I, I can't kinda consider that my job, so.
Yeah, cause you do minutes.
I mean, I'd love to give somebody else a minute.
You know, it's a huge service and thank you so much for doing it. Otherwise, we'd have, have to not come to meetings.
A hundred bucks a meeting for the zoning board to get minutes taken.
Yeah.
A hundred bucks a meeting?
A meeting.
Wow.
Who takes the minutes? Derek.
Derek Mulligan does it, she does a fantastic job. Derek Mulligan does it, she does a fantastic job. She's been doing it for a long time, knows what she's doing, and is well worth the, the, well, you know, it's a hundred dollars a meeting, but.
They don't meet that often, fortunately.
They don't, you know, it's maximum twelve hundred a year.
Yeah.
It's worth every penny.
Yep.
Um, yeah, and I'm, you know, I'm willing to be vice, stay as vice chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate Tim as vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm on it, Rich.
Alright, so the only one, the last thing I have, um, I I should have printed out more copies of the map, but let me bring it up.
Oh, the merger?
Yeah, this is a, oh, that's right, a merger that David Rove is doing, um. Actually, I did send you.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the merger, I also read the RSA, and it looks like we have no stagnant, so.
That's pretty much, what I did is I went through, um.
I've seen it, yeah.
I talked to David and I I made, I asked him, I say, do you know that if you merge this, you probably can't subdivide it in the way that it is currently divided up, and he said, yes, I know that. And so, I mean, I just wanted to be sure he knew what he was getting into by making this all one lot.
But, I mean, it it has to be, the RSA sells, you have to sell it with the subdivision allowed. It has to be.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, they can subdivide it, but it's not gonna come out like that.
Yeah, cause now.
Because of the road frontages and that orphan lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially that, that.
Yeah, the 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 landlocked lot.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, that's the, these are all off of uh Bear Hill and Latlin and Pikeout. I don't know if you know where David Rove Junior lives, right?
Right.
It'll be.
Right up there, yeah.
Right in this area, so it's right where all those roads merge, those lots. Um, they're all undeveloped lots, um, putting them together creates no uh non-conformities.
Right. So, it'll become just one lot.
It'll become one lot.
Unless it's subdivided in the future.
Unless in the future.
Right.
Or uh somebody down the road applies for a subdivision.
Regular subdivision, yep.
So presumably, he's doing this because the taxes are low?
Yes, you, uh, each lot.
Put even more of Lyme into current use.
Well, it's in current use.
One of the lots is too small.
No, but it's it's a contiguous lot with.
Oh, I see.
So it's.
Yeah, it won't change, it won't change too much.
Yeah, it won't change, but when you look at each individual lot, with the exception of the landlocked one, uh, you would, a small portion of the acreage, the front acreage is taxed at a higher rate because it has the potential of being developed for housing.
Under current use?
No, under.
Under.
Just, it is.
Yeah.
Uh, you'd have to take it out of current use, but it has nothing to do with current use. Um, it's just the way that um vacant lots are assessed. Um, so you you have that front acreage in each one of those lots that is assessed at a higher value than all the rest of the acreage. When you merge them together, only the front acreage for one lot would be, um, because now it's one whole lot.
Right.
And so instead of having a front acreage for three out of those four lots, you would only have it for one.
Right.
And so, but even if that is not a.
No, I don't think David cares anything about the taxes, I think he's just, I think he's just doing it so it's one lot, and maybe wouldn't get subdivided in the future.
Yeah, it's, the the change in in taxation is going to be minimal.
Yeah, I think he could care less.
So, so we really create a lot that crosses town road?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
In the zoning, it does allow.
Didn't the Greens, the Greens just did that across Route ten, didn't they?
Yes. Well, they they didn't merge, those were lots that were merged by the town. And so, those were um put back, or they unmerged.
But, but, but they were on two sides of Route ten, though, or just.
Put back to their original configuration.
They didn't categorize.
Uh, yeah, the the zoning does allow for lots to cross roads.
Can I make a motion to approve the merger?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So, when do we meet next? Second week in November, April?
Yeah.
Second Thursday.
So, do we have any cases coming up?
I have nothing for the board.
Okay, can we work on the, thinking about the housing chapter for the master plan then?
Yeah.
And.
We have what you gave us.
Right, and so, well, if it's April eleventh, right? So, um, if everybody could think about goals for the town of Lyme for housing. So, let's all bring at least one goal. And if you can think of more, definitely think of more, and then if you are like, oh, what is a goal, just go to the Hanover Chapter Three in their Sustainability Master Plan, and there are four goals in Hanover for the current master plan, which seem to cover like very broad things. I mean, I think we can think about goals, and then what we do when we get our goals is think about strategies, ways the town could come up with, you know, achieving those goals. So, so this is like big picture, maybe, you know, more affordable housing in Lyme. And then we think about changing zoning, creating a housing for us, you know, the strategies that go with that. So, let's just think about the big picture, and then we can get happy with the goals, and then we can brainstorm strategies and um and kind of work from there, and I think for me, that that helped organize writing the chapters, knowing what we're writing about. And so, it's almost like a topical thing where we write about that particular goal and the strategies, and how that fits into Lyme for each one, rather than going, oh, there's, you know, twenty-four manufactured houses and, you know, two hundred single-family homes and all that, and we can have all that as background document. And I think that if somebody really wanted to dig into data, whoever likes doing that, I mean, we can use the current census information to develop a, you know, some of the numbers for, that we have as background, but in a way, those numbers, uh, you know, what does it matter, we know that we have a housing problem, and it's almost more of a uh qualitative thing than a quantitative thing that we need to address.
Does anybody think there is a dead house?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's irrelevant to ask, what is our, what is our inventory?
Right.
And uh and and where we stand.
Right.
Um, because that gives you some sense of.
Does everybody feel, does everybody feel like there's something there that we should work on?
Well, it's, it's out there, everybody's been saying it nationwide.
One thing I'll say is that you, there's very little information actually out there. The current census only collects information for bigger areas. And even in Hanover, we have a lot of information for the census tract that includes the downtown, but Etna and all that.
What, when you're, when you're talking about census, are you talking about what, what the human census is?
What, what the, what the two thousand twenty census collected?
About people?
About houses, they collect about houses as well.
So, so it's the housing census, because we have all of the information from the vision database about what we have.
Right, and that's much better than the federal.
Yeah, yes, okay, yes.
Knowing that, and then depending upon what.
Trying to get the language straight here.
And depending upon what we wanna use as a baseline to say, oh, I mean, probably from David, we can find out what the rate of housing production is in Lyme, and, you know, getting.
Family house ability.
Yes, yeah. And um.
But at some point, we're gonna have to get, I think, down to pretty much detail, otherwise, if we're gonna change something, we're gonna have to figure out what it's gonna, how it's gonna affect the whole town, obviously.
Yeah, well, I mean, pretty simply, you can go to Keys to the Valley, we have a regional responsibility to provide or accommodate housing in our town. And I think a fairly fair objective study was the Keys to the Valley. Go to their thing, and they talk about what, you know, how much your regional share is, and they talk about it between now and twenty forty. How many new housing units should go in Lyme? And I don't know why we wouldn't just work with that and figure out.
So, we just Google the Keys to the Valley?
It's, it's really buried in there, but yes, you can Google Keys to the Valley, and they have a Housing Needs Assessment, and then it's broken up by town. Um, how many housing units? In Hanover, it was eight hundred housing units that should be produced between twenty twenty and twenty forty, and they've got some number that's the same for Lyme.
I mean, how do they decide?
The Regional Planning Commission looked at how, how much housing we need for the the area, and then allocated it based on water and sewer availability, you know, proximity to jobs, uh available land, that type of thing. So, I mean, you can question what they said, but in terms of our regional responsibility, what's wrong with that number? Um, we don't know any better than them, what the, what our regional share, fair share is. Or, or we can, somebody can write us something about why that's wrong, but um I think that that's, I'm gonna posit, it's a pretty good number to work with, and so, and so, given that number, where would we put that housing? Could we all fit it in the Lyme Common Area, or, you know, we don't need someplace else? So, that's, you know, but those are the kind of strategy things we can talk about once we have our goals.
Yeah, we want, I mean, I like to look way ahead, I know it's impossible, but, you know, what do we want Lyme to look like in forty years? You know, which is pretty difficult to do, but if we could, it'd be great.
Well, I think we will have to focus on that, if we're trying to accommodate X number of housing units, we're gonna need to say where we want that to go, and how is that gonna look?
Right, but, you know, what do we want Lyme to look like in forty, you know?
Well, we have a pretty good sense about people don't want change, we already know.
Right.
So, our, our.
We don't wanna get to the point where it's a place where people don't wanna live, you know?
I understand that, so we have to be very creative and um and maybe our housing chapter says, actually, we don't wanna do what the regional fair share is, and here's why. And we need to make a good story.
Or it's impractical to even consider, it's not feasible to do.
But, we we can debate that when we know what that number is, I I will find out what the number is for Lyme, but it's, it's informative for everyone to go to that study and and read that as background because it's very well researched. The three regional planning commissions got together and worked together because we have a regional housing market, and um, you know, they also talk about barriers, um, that's, you know, which none of that's gonna be new to anybody, but it's
Yeah.
useful context for what we're trying to do here, which is be responsive to that, as well as, you know, true to our town and what it can really take.
Yeah, I'll be interested to see what they say, you know, go along with the talk.
So, I I can't be here on the eleventh, I'm eleven, like, I'm.
You can send us some goal.
Well, I was, how about that? I I will, I will definitely do that, but I didn't want to.
Okay, just write them down, I mean, they don't have to be deep, or, you know, it's like, here's my goal for housing, you know?
But I just wanted to share one piece of data, that as kind of a grounding, that if you, the the teacher contract for Lyme is available online.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at fairly senior teachers, they're making seventy-five to eighty thousand a year.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you think about what, what, how much house could somebody with seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars a year of income afford? And do we, wouldn't we want our teachers to be able to live in Lyme, that kind of question?
Right, so they have to be subsidized housing.
Would be either subsidized, I mean, it's essentially a three hundred thousand dollar mortgage, including taxes, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, a three hundred thousand dollar house, including taxes.
Yeah, well, and what do we want, just old, old teachers?
No, exactly, no, no, no. But I was saying, I was saying, if if the case is bad for them.
Yeah.
Then, then, and he proved that, and that's like.
Yep.
And that gives you other feasibility issue.
So, maybe, are you considering a married person, so it's two times seventy-five, or are you saying?
No, for, I mean, I was not expecting, there's a lot of single people around, so a a single income, seventy-five to eighty thousand a year, what can you afford?
Or if they're.
I don't think they can.
They're married with kids, and and the wife can't work.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so when we had, remember, we had the uh like housing discussions, and we had the, you know, why can't young professionals come to Lyme? Who, who was on the board then? It was pretty interesting, cause we had somebody who was in like Upper Valley, young people, and we also had a real estate person.
I remember the real estate.
And, yeah, and they, they were basically saying, well, one, there's not good internet, and two, there's no cell coverage. And and then the housing types that we have are all too big, you know, for young professionals to be locating here. And so, I mean, I would call a teacher a young professional, if you're a single young, why should you have to be married to live in Lyme?
Exactly, no, exactly.
So.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Note that uh that that salary range is on the high end for the town. If you look at the highway department, the police department.
Absolutely.
Um.
Yes.
It town offices.
But, but if if we prove the case that it's impossible for that person to appear that.
I'm just saying.
Everybody else flows from that, right?
You know, that, those salary ranges are high for.
Right, right.
You know, so if you look at the highway department, to not even close.
I know.
So, maybe one of our goals is to have housing for town employees. And then how do we do that? Is is our strategies, you know, so, but yeah, everyone can come up with, you know, as many goals as you want, and um and then we can start working on how do we do these things. It's a, just, just a starting point, and then we can get into narrative and all that, um, and you know, doing data, data can be in an appendix so that anybody can see how many houses. And could you figure out what are kind of, in the past ten years, how many new homes?
Oh, yeah, I, I've got all the, I, I track all the.
That's great.
So I can just.
And so.
Go by year.
So.
Could I get another refresh of that list? Thank you, I'll send you an email.
Yeah.
So, it'd be really nice to have like maybe, you know, a little bit of history, maybe over the past twenty years, how many homes have been built?
Yeah, I don't feel we go that far back.
Okay, well, as ever far back as you can, just so we have some current, that'd be good. Have that real, and then I don't know if we wanna update the, what was the inventory like?
Oh, when we did the, when John and I drove.
Around.
All, yeah, that was years ago, was it? Yeah, we drove all over town, and we looked at every house, basically.
Right.
And then we, we, at that time, we figured that twenty, was it twenty-nine percent? Almost thirty percent of the houses in Lyme qualified for um workforce housing.
Were appraised.
Were appraised, yeah. It was really, it was kind of a surprise.
How do we look at that number now that uh, you know, we had the adjustment?
Right.
The current assessment is the, it's at sixty, sixty-three percent of market. Of, of, so, your house assessment is at sixty-three percent of market value.
Appraisal.
Appraisal, sorry.
Really?
Yeah, oh, it's terrible.
I just got something, it said it was like in the eighties.
Not in Lyme.
I just had an independent appraisal done.
Oh, yes, but this is from the DRA. The DRA letter says, when considering abatements, the value in Lyme is sixty-three point eight percent of market value.
Right, so, I don't understand what that.
That means that there are not, that our assessed values are forty percent under, forty percent under what the real market value.
But why, if I, if I just had an appraisal done?
Well, I mean, not everybody is exactly sixty-five percent.
So, the average.
Oh, okay, the average.
Right, but that just means that our tax rate is higher, is higher. I mean, what really matters is how much money the town spends.
Right.
And that's really the only thing that matters.[1674.28] And that's really the only thing that matters. So if everybody's assessed, say, fairly equally, it doesn't matter what you're assessed because you're paying, you know, for the amount of money the town spends. If you have, if we're assessed at a hundred percent of value, then our tax rate just comes down.
Comes down, yeah.
Yeah, so it's all, you know.
But it's not gonna save you any money.
Right.
Because you, you still.
Cause we still have to spend nine point, what is it now? It's almost ten million, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, is it eleven now?
So does the state require a reassessment after it drops to a certain level or?
Well, I think we're required every five years anyway.
And in fact, um, this, if the state finds that the equalization rate is under eighty percent, that, that you need to revalue. And so we're at sixty-three. So the select board just recently has said, yep, we're starting to budget money for, um, for revaluation.
But they haven't set out an RFP and assessors are very hard to find.
Yeah, so.
The last time they sent it one out, they only got one reply.
Wow. Cause wasn't it years ago when, what was her name?
Diana.
Diana. I mean, she did it all the time, right? So we never really had to hire, we, she saved us a huge amount of money.
Well, no, she was a subcontractor, just like Todd is.
Yep.
Right, but I mean, she, gradually, you know.
Well, but.
But that's, that's what Todd does.
Yeah.
He does twenty percent a year.
Exactly the same.
Twenty percent a year.
But then he, right, so that should keep it pretty close.
But the, the problem right now, where you said, market prices, or, you know, you're still paying far over the, the assessed value for houses. And even though the, the assessments all went up, people are still spending more than that.
Well, and it, and it's not linear. The expensive houses are going for even more above their assessed value than the cheaper houses are.